Rise for the pledge of allegiance.
All please.
Here.
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 Here. We have a quorum. Adopt the agenda.
May I?
That the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Opposed?
Thank you. We have no public comment this evening in our school spotlight, in case you haven't heard them. It's the Early Education Center and we are very excited to have you here. Dr. Ba.
Hi, I am Amy Ba. I'm the proud principal of all the adorableness out there. And I was gonna talk a little bit about our school, but we will just skip right ahead because our little bunny ears are very excited to perform for you, so I will let them come on in.
She took us up back. She's like, wait a minute.
Oh my gosh, how cute.
This could be.
Oh buddy.
Hi.
Hey buddy.
Having none of it.
Oh my gosh, I love it.
The ones that are sleeping. They're sleeping. It's like, ah.
He goes.
He's going, man.
Is he asleep?
Yeah, he's asleep.
That little boy hasn't moved.
Oh my gosh. He's in there.
It's a lot.
He's telling him.
Oh. Do you want to try?
Oh, she's smiling. I forgot.
Picture? Alright, we're gonna try.
Oh my gosh, there's.
That is so good. She did a good job. Yay.
Nice job, William. I am Parks Daddy, yep. Am I here?
Oh my gosh. Oh, this might be.
Why do I stay here?
Gotta grab maybe a parent, come up. Seriously.
Who is it? I'm wondering.
You gotta enunciate.
Oh, she is in it, man. She is on it.
Seriously.
Oh, she's on it.
I don't think so either. Oh my gosh. Like hurting kids? That was so cute. Yep. Thank you all so much for coming. Can you wave bye to us? Bye. 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 Look at her little boots. She's so cute. Bye. Bye. You guys have a question? What's that?
Sticker.
I got a text here. It's too funny.
He was asking for our sticker. He thought we had a sticker for him. Oh, he's looking for it. He's asking everyone about his sticker.
Oh my gosh, she's here with the twins.
Oh my.
Month ago? Two months ago. Maybe sticker.
Yeah, they're saying he's talking about those stickers, yeah.
Last week or something. She's amazing. Yeah.
Wow.
Oh my gosh.
That was good.
That was great.
This is group two, another group, right?
Another group, right?
This is four.
Oh wow. Fourth school spotlight ever. Too funny. Love it.
Group two, head of state outside.
That's Miss Fortis' sister. That was my, Miss Curtis was my English teacher. It's been back in me since then. Alright, I got it. But around 10 o'clock at night.
People don't listen to football.
Maybe we should've looked up the high school.
Looking to win this.
Hey.
Little.
Get bells.
Wow.
Uh oh. There's a whole bunch. It's okay.
That wasn't the trumpet. Which hay they go in?
Probably not what they practice. Yep. Celebrity.
Yeah, you are a celebrity with the kids.
See you every morning, so.
Yeah.
Why was your dad sitting up there?
I don't know him is the problem because he's probably been.
They'll be asking him. What'd your dad do up there?
Okay, well, thank you for having us. Our next song is "Festive Now." You might know this one.
Oh, I'm so excited.
They know. I don't know how to rehearse it. Oh yeah, you are ready.
Alright Carson, you gonna show me how to do it? Are you good at it? Come on buddy. Let's go.
It's a purple, right?
Yeah, baby. What do you think, man?
I can do this. Are you sure?
Ready to go? You can come out there with your car. You wanna come out there with you? You okay? Okay, are we supposed to go out there? Got it, alright. So we gotta be out there.
Thanks Nick.
Yeah, Nick.
Excuse me. There she is right here.
Hey buddy.
Is it on the floor? Or with another kid?
No, thank you.
She left it on the floor. Do I have to know what I'm doing? Or purple bell? Okay, we'll come right here. Okay. Ollie, are you ready?
Hey, thanks. Out of Lyra's.
Thank you.
Thank you. I rang the wrong C the first two times. Started creeping up my hand. Yeah, I'm trying to move. Trying to move. She's trying to hold on to it. Everybody's walking together.
We ring the bell once.
Thank you guys for coming. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're like, yeah?
That's right. Thanks for coming. Thank you for coming.
I cannot believe they can coordinate those kids to do that.
That was good.
That is a lie to get them.
That was impressive. It just felt like I wasn't teaching.
No. The energy. Seriously, that's amazing.
Wow.
That was fun.
Alright, that was good energy for us. That's awesome. Yeah. Okay, we're gonna move ahead with the consent agenda.
May I have the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Information items. First of all, financials.
We have the financial reports for March in your board packet. At this point in time, the district still remains on track to make 20% at the year-end operating fund balance. Did anyone have any questions about any of the reports provided?
We're gonna talk more about budget later.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Thank you. Bond project update.
So from Newkirk, Novex side, Southview Construction is on schedule, if not ahead. This past week, we, they have poured the concrete slab for the front additions as well as a slab on the north. There's a north square of concrete that's outdoor classroom type setting. And the steel should arrive on site next week. And weather permitting, they have a, they've had some kids and staff sign a beam and they'll have a little ceremony out there when they place that beam, hopefully next week, if not the week after with weather. From DLR standpoint, they have finished the design documents, well, let me back up, design development documents. And they've turned those over to Newkirk to start estimating. And they went through those documents with the principals as well as myself and technology department today to kind of fine tune Hawthorne, KE, and Dogwood documents. So the plan is to have construction documents out on the first week of June, bid those in mid to late June, and bring those to the Board of Education on the July board meeting for those other three schools. Questions?
What's the timeline for, once we bid in July, are we gonna be doing a school year work project or are we gonna be going to the next summer?
So the plan would be to start any additions to those buildings in October-ish, and then have those go through the school year. And then the renovations would take place starting that first day of summer next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kopp? Carney Leadership Academy?
Okay, so about three years ago, we started our first Carney Leadership Academy. And the reason we did this is we noticed that when we were interviewing some of our teachers who were aspiring to be, you know, entry-level administrators, they weren't coming in as prepared as some of the teachers that were coming in from other districts. And those districts had leadership academies. So we wanted to make sure our aspiring administrators had the same edge that these other schools had. So through an application process, the first round through, we chose five aspiring administrators, and they were provided with professional development. They had the opportunity to shadow our administrators around the district. And some of them even had opportunities to fill in when principals were absent. So we have done the same thing. This time, it's an application process. Our current Leadership Academy has six new aspiring administrators. Mitch Masker, who is our Carney Elementary Principal, he is working on his doctorate in educational leadership. And he was very interested in being a big part of this, so he's kind of been leading this group this year. They've been getting professional development, chances for shadowing, and they added on, they each have a passion project. So that's what they're going to do. They're going to give you an overview of what their passion project was. So I will turn it over to them. We'll start with Sammy Lath.
Yeah.
She'll always be Sammy Lath to me. Sammy Rothbus.
Oops.
Well, I first want to thank everyone for this opportunity to learn from some of the best in our district. That's kind of the philosophy that led my passion project as well. I fully believe that we have an excellent staff here at Carney, being both a graduate and now a teacher here. I love this district, and I felt that there was a learning opportunity that we were missing out on. So my passion project that I started is called Bulldog Walks. This is a bridge between classrooms towards a collaborative learning environment. So essentially, the idea here is that teachers need to be celebrated, teachers need more confidence, and teachers need to have more conversations with each other, which led to the conclusion that teachers need to see each other teaching. So with this, we focused on student engagement and authentic literacy, which are two of the district goals for our students and what we are kind of wanting them to be focused on throughout this year. So what we do during Bulldog Walks, we set a date ahead of time, and we will take volunteer teachers to open up their classroom doors for a group of teachers to come in during their planned time, and we observe each other teaching for about five to 10 minutes. It's just a short little snapshot, but we get. But we get an idea of not only what's going on in our building and see how our students react in different environments, but we also get to see those best practices put into place. It allows us to see other contents in areas that might not be our personal strong suit so that we can learn how to make our own teaching better. To measure effectiveness, we have post-walk surveys that are sent out to the whole staff. It's anonymous. So I take that feedback and use it for the next time we do a Bulldog Walk on how to make improvements and make this a better process for everyone. The participation rates are just referring to the teachers who are willing to open their doors and let us in. It can kind of be intimidating to walk a group of 10 people in, as you guys know, with the different observations that you do. So the willingness to do that has definitely improved since first round. So some of the results from doing this, we conducted three different Bulldog Walks so far this year. Teachers are requesting professional development on things that they've seen in their classroom. There's been a more collaborative culture and teacher self-efficacy as far as teachers wanting to improve all on their own. Conversations related to individual student achievement and seeing how students interact in different classroom settings allows us to talk about how to best benefit each individual student. Students are really enjoying them. I've had several students, they know that I'm the one who leads them, and they will personally request that we go to their favorite teacher's classroom to see XYZ project that they're working on. And then teachers are also leading micro PD sessions. Let me show you how this would work in your classroom. Here's what we did here. Here's how it can apply to your content. So just to wrap it up, in the future, what this will look like, we're gonna do three scheduled walkthrough dates as a team. And then we'll have one observation scheduled with our building sub so that they can see same content. Because at the junior high, our planned time is aligned with everyone in our same content area. So our, like, I teach English, so I would contact our building sub Abby for an hour that she would cover my class so I could see another English teacher so we can get that same content as well. So. Any questions?
Can you reiterate or just share what some of those conversations will look like? You said that it's increased collaboration. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
So it's been a lot of trying to connect across content areas. So we have like science there, working on motion and the physics stuff. I'm an English teacher, guys, so I'm stretching. But they worked together with like our history teacher, and they did like a cannonball launch and trying to get those cross contents of like, oh, well, this is how I could use that in my classroom. A lot of the collaboration is more, look at this teaching practice. Like Steve Bacchus is an excellent Spanish teacher. I call him the king of Kagan strategies. And that's not strategies that are, a lot of people are familiar with in every content area. And so he has offered different strategies on like sentence starters for debate discussions that they could do in like an English or history class as well.
Thank you.
One question. So you're, when you started the process, did you think that, like, what the results that you thought you were gonna get, did those actually align? Or were you surprised by anything in your process as you went through this? Like, was there an aha moment or anything like that that you, that you saw?
So this was something that was actually implemented in a school district I worked in beforehand. So I kind of had an idea of what I was getting myself into and what to expect. I didn't expect such positive feedback right away, especially when taking away teacher planned time. I thought there'd be a lot more grumbling, which there's grumbling always. But overall, a lot of teachers were super appreciative of being able to go to different content areas. So it was nice to be surprised by that.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Abby Madison?
Hello. Oh, I didn't get any taller since the last. Maybe next time. Okay, so with my passion project, I knew I wanted to do something with PBL and getting it rolling more at Southview. So I really put a lot of time thinking about what will help teachers the most? What can they use the most? What do they need the most with this? So that resulted in a shared drive. So I created a shared drive, so the whole staff has access to this. And with talking to teachers, I realized some of the things they need to start PBL are very, very simple. So for example, if they're writing a unit, they might just need a list of, like, what kinds of speakers would be perfect to come in for this unit? Or what kinds of field trips would be great to align with this? Just creating lists of ideas. Sometimes just those such simple things is all they need to get rolling. So some of the things in there are little quick things like that. And then there's some things I threw in there that are a little, little deeper. So for example, if a teacher wants to look at a social studies standard, they would go to the DUSI website, pull up the document, and it is like 75 pages long. And you can't drill down to a specific grade level or a certain standard. You have to just scroll and scroll and search and search. So it is not user-friendly. And everything the teachers need is in that document, but it's not quick. It's, it's very cumbersome. So I wanted to create a sort of cheat sheet for them. So if you go to the next one. So this is not user-friendly either, but I wanted to show you. It looks nicer. I overlapped them. I wanted to show you kind of an example of what they're looking at. So I took all of the social studies standards from kindergarten to fifth grade. And each grade level is a tab. And then each sheet is all of their social studies standards right there. But the best part about it is the vertical alignment. That doesn't exist in the DUSI documents. So now, any teacher can look, what, what does this standard look like in the grade level before they came to me? What does it look like for me? And what does it look like next year for these kids? So I highlighted so you don't have to read it all. But for example, so like the first one for kindergarten, one of their social studies standards would be to label and analyze different social studies sources. And then for first grade, that labeling and analyzing turns into identify and analyze those sources. And then you could look at the second grade page and see how that moves forward. So that's pretty powerful for teachers to be able to just quickly grab that and look at it and make sense out of that. So. Next. Okay, and then I wanted to take this opportunity to tell you some really cool things that are happening with PBL. I need to shout out the first grade teachers at Southview. They have been amazing guinea pigs. They, it's, I put their names at the bottom because they're really awesome. I have thrown a lot of ideas at them. What if you did this? And could you do this? And they have taken all of my ideas. And they have made them so much better than I could even come up with. So that's really, really cool. So then, so they started their first PBL unit. It's a writing unit, and they chose animals as the topic. And so their driving question for first graders was, how can I research to teach others? So they were teaching the kids how to work together to research, how to gather all their information, and then turn it into something that they can teach others from. So the coolest part, as they got through those, those units, was I talked to Mrs. Zimmerman. She's one of the first grade teachers. And these were her biggest takeaways from it. The students using their knowledge from research to answer questions. So the rainforest group was asked why the frog had bright colors. So the kids got up and talked about their frog in the rainforest. And some of the kids said, why, why did the frog have bright colors? And the kid said, it's a poison frog. His bright colors tell predators to not eat him. So they, they, they were ready for the questions to come at them. And they were prepared and so proud of themselves that they were on it. They knew it. But I think this is the coolest part, that PBL creates self-motivated learners. So the desert group was asked, why do cactuses have spikes on them? And you can read, but the kid had no idea. Like deer in headlights, I don't know the answer. I, this was not in our research. I don't know why cactuses have spikes. And they, they just said, I'm not sure. We'll have to look into it. But she said later in the day, they were doing something totally different, hours later. And she saw that kid sneak off. And he, he was gonna find it. He, it was like a mission. I have to figure this out. And he went and figured it out. He found it. And he went to the kid who asked, and he's like, he wrote, they have spikes to keep their water in because it's very hot in the desert. So he figured it out. And, and they all clapped for him. And it, like, this is very exciting. So it, PBL just creates such self-motivated kids. They're just so into it. They love it so much. So I think that's really cool. It speaks for itself. And I don't have the level of cute or fun that the bunnies had. I did not bring instruments. I did not know what I was up against tonight. But I did include a couple of their videos. A lot of teachers get so intimidated because they think PBL, like kindergarten or first grade, they just can't do it. It's over their head. It's too much. It's too complicated. But I wanted to show you that they can do it. They, they can totally do it, just at their first grade level. So if you wanna, they're pretty quick.
My name is Penelope. My name is Bella. My name is Sadie. This is the grasslands. For me, those are special, special fields to stay pink. Elephants blow water out of their trucks. It's one of them sitting in the grasslands. This is all that we know about the grasslands. My name is Dana. My name is Elijah. Welcome to the wetlands. There are mango trees and lily pads and parrot eggs. There's snakes and spiders. And best of all, there is trees. Mango trees and trees. And lily pads for the job. And lily pads for the frogs. And the reason they have lily pads is we wanna keep them safe. And for two, for them to jump on. And how they keep them safe is whatever's in the water, they can jump on a lily pad. And if even a predator tries and jumps on the lily pad with them, and then it eats them, tries to, they jump to another lily pad because it's a frog. And then they jump. And then they jump here, and then to those safety lands. Maybe. Unless they are a wolf. Because then this guy's gonna.
So they are very proud of their work. They like to show it off. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome. Thanks, Abby. Abby, I know you made some structural changes at Southview. Do you want to talk about that? Because I think resources are wonderful. But I think you've also personally done a lot to help support, mentor, and collaborate. Do you want to talk about those changes?
Yes. I've kind of been chuckling since January because I, I signed up to be a librarian, but I have found myself being a librarian. And I don't know what my other title is. I'm sort of a PBL coach. So yep, since January, instead of six classes in the library, I've been doing three. So kind of a half day of library media and half a day helping coach teachers and students with PBL. So speaking of deer in headlights from earlier, me. But I think it's been going really well, and I've really enjoyed it. I love writing curriculum, so it's been really fun helping teachers do that. And, and now seeing these things come to fruition is really cool.
It's really helped to build momentum for PBL across the school.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's helping everybody get some confidence with it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And our final presentation is Nick Ward.
I think we're getting progressively a little taller as we go along here. All right. Hi, I'm Nick Ward. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate the opportunity to be in this program. I learned a lot. And my project, I kind of went through more of a facilities direction with mine. As you know, we have a overabundance of space here in the district. Not, right? And so storage is an issue. If you wanna, who's my slide person? There we go. Uh, thanks, Ray. So the problem we had is, we've added girls wrestling six years ago. This, so this was the sixth year. And our numbers have steadily grown and, or held serve every season. The boys have been well-established for quite some time. This year particularly, we had, December came around, and the football team came off of their state championship run, and 25 new guys showed up that, we'd already been training for a month. We had always ran girls and boys together. And we started, as we've gone along and evolved, we've kind of realized that ideally, we need to probably have separate accommodations. It's just logistically tough deal to get done. And so this year, when the boys showed up and we had, we had some potential safety issues. So we started thinking about problem-solving that. And we, I started kind of wandering around the building, thinking about, what, where could we roll out a couple strips of mat? Maybe siphon off some of these, these younger, younger guys or the newer guys and, and allow them to kind of get differentiated learning over here. It just didn't seem like anything really made sense. And so we found, I found this, this old metal shop back by Mr. Bundrich's room. And I was like, we had an overflow weight room in there. So a couple more problems here. I'm getting ahead of myself. So we had lack of mat storage. We have two competition mats that, I don't know if you've been in our, our facilities this year, but they're lined up down the back hallway of the, of the new gym. Not ideal. So, and then we had some security concerns about door propping with our outside clubs that come in and use our facility of an evening. And so there's four doors minimum to go through to get to our facility for these little guys and their parents. They drop kids off. They want to come back in later. Somebody's propping doors. Dave Schwartz and Box telling me, stop that, right? And I tell them, stop that! And they keep doing it! And so, so there's some, there's some issues there. And so wandering around here, I found some ideas. And so I walked through this overflow weight room, and I've got some pictures to share with you here. It'll make more sense. So I started walking through there, and I'm like, when's this thing getting used, Coach Minnick? And he said, well, you know, we use it as an overflow weight room in June, July. Some of our weights classes have used it over the, over the years when we have super-large weight classes. We haven't had that in a while. And so looking, talking to Coach Minnick, he said, hey, you know, we don't use it that often. And so I was like, what about the staff cardio room? Is it adjacent room to this? And we had kind of made that just a little workout room facility for the staff a couple years ago. But both of these had kind of evolved to as a catch-all of surplus items and junk in the corners. Like, and I'll show you some, when I do my initial walkthrough here, there's like some boxes of new rolling chairs, and then there's a weight rack. And then, you know, and so I was like, we can make this better. I think we can, we're not maximizing this, this, this space as, it's underutilized. And so how can we be more efficient about it? So lots of things, surplus items in both rooms. So got with grounds and maintenance. Talked with Gus and Dave and administration at the high school. And then there were some unforeseen problems. It's kind of like when you, you buy an old house and you have these ideas for tearing it up and doing this big project, and you do the first tear up, and there's three more problems. That was kind of what we started to run into initially. We found out there were some other groups that had kind of laid claim to some of these spaces unofficially. And so they had been maybe left out of this process. So we had to problem-solve for all that and try to get everybody accommodated. So the plan was to go in and get, get the overflow weight room, take those racks, make the cardio room more of a, an accommodation for everybody that we can use. The staff can use it. Our Carney Academy students are using it now. And it still maintains the integrity of a weight room like Coach Minnick needs. So that's kind of where we got. So we, we got in over Christmas break. I got some dads in there, and I'll go to another slide here in just a second. Let's kind of look at what I got here. So paint job. So I get these dads in over Christmas break, and I was like, here's my vision. We've got no money and no space. And here's what I want to do. And so from there, those dads got real resourceful, real quick. And we got a paint job bid, or not bid, donated supplies and the job. If that would have been a bid job with, with supplies and prevailing wages, it would have cost us over $20,000. We got that for zero. So that room is, has new, new paint job. Safety concerns, need wall pads for a wrestling room. Those cost money. We got creative with our supply budget for the wrestling team with some fundraising. We got those wall pads. They're on order. They should be here in another month. And then, so then we needed some, some wrestling mats for. And then, so then we needed some wrestling mats permanently for the ground. And so we got the top-of-the-line highest safety rated. We got through a private donation and some fundraising, got that taken care of. So at the cost of the district, probably like $5,000, we've got about a $45,000 new wrestling room. And on top of that, our staff cardio room is now more functional for the staff. Our Carney Academy kids use that and when it's needed for an overflow weight room, that's getting used. Now, back to the robotics team. They're, and we're all kind of dealing with this, you know, making do with what we've got. And the robotics kids have been doing that for quite some time. They have a very little workshop. They had kind of commandeered one of these spaces on the next slide. So I'll just kind of, I'll kind of show you what we came up with them for them. So this is the initial walkthrough. This is, I go and I stumble into this. I'm like, "What is this place?" So you can kind of see, we've got stuff over in the corners. There's an old sled Mr. Jones used to make kids punish, you know, punish kids with. There's boxes over there with rolling chairs. And if, you might have seen in the first pass-through, there's a mezzanine in there. And in the mezzanine is a giant pile of surplus desks. So that will be mat storage for the mats that are in the hallway. Those will go to a surplus, how that goes. Mr. Nolan. And so. Yeah, yeah. And he's got the answers to that. And so this summer, those are going away. Our mats will get moved in there. And so I'll go to the next one here. Oh, next one. All right. So here's our dads breaking that thing down. We had some students come in, some siblings. I got to give, real quick, I got some of these private donations. The paint job was long blasting and painting. His two sons, one Zach is an alumni. Caleb is a senior this year. Those guys came in on those days that we were out of school for freezing temps and no heating in there at the time. And they got this all kind of done, the paint job and all that. So they helped us move these over. So that's the dad crew and the brain trust that kind of got this all figured out. Here's an image. You can kind of see how we're going to solve some of these problems. So that green box at the top, that's the mezzanine. Those will be mats. We solve our security issue over there. That's a direct access door to the outside. So no more propping of doors for our youth club. That little, you know, little corner room there will be a wrestling office and then the storage there will consolidate all of our wrestling storage. So boys and girls, we've kind of got stuff in multiple different little closets. They're going to all be in one place now, which will free up another closet. Here's our paint job. Just kind of a little preview there. Got the old Bulldog gray. Super exciting. And then next slide. So this is like how we made do in the meantime. So this is, and this all happened during the middle of our season. So you can kind of see, we made makeshift wall mats. Those are about this thick. We got tough in there this year. We hit the wall a few times. So this will be wall-to-wall and I've got a layout here for you on the next slide. This will be wall-to-wall mats. That's our layout for our wall mats. And then the next slide is our custom dimensions for the floor. So on the wrap-up here, new improved space, safety concerns addressed, mat storage addressed, outside access addressed, surplus items are on the move. Our wrestling storage is consolidated. Staff cardio room's good. Weight room maintains its integrity. We got two furnaces fixed in there. Girls love that. I don't know if you saw that on the last picture, but we have a garage door in there, which is super cool. That's a huge mood lifter. When we yanked that thing up, those nice days in February before state, it was like, "Natural light." And they're like, "Oh, my God, Coach Ward, can we just go outside?" Like, so that's nice. So future steps, we've got a hookup already in there for a drinking fountain. We're going to install those wall mats. We're going to have, I want to get with you on this, Mr. Weichel, but we're going to have a little open house night to dedicate the room, a little ladies' night, hang our banners, get our championships on the wall, all that stuff. So that's it. And then that garage door, we've got some neat ideas for sealing that, redoing that weather seal and maybe adding some natural light in there. I think that's it. Any questions?
The space looks amazing, Nick.
Looks great.
Thank you. It's a work in progress and, but, oh, robotics. We did take care of the robotics. So they have, one of those closets that we have kind of taken our stuff out of is actually a bigger space than what they had. It's still in proximity to their workspace. And so they're going to have a bigger area to store their things. It'll be easier to go access it because they go in there and it's like Sanford and Sons are just junking stuff out, you know, and pulling things out of a pile and measuring things. I'm like, "Yeah, we could do better here." So that's where we're at.
That's awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Great use of time and effort and a lot of good things. So thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cop. We'll look forward to hearing more about this. All right, next, the 2425 preliminary, or no, I'm skipping. Technology. Sorry, Ryan.
Move that up. Hello, everyone. Here's our technology program evaluation for the past two years. Here's a list of our staff. Of course, I'm the technology director. We have Chris Shirk, our network administrator. Matt Walker, helped us technician, too. Andrew Durham is a senior support specialist from Heartland Business Systems. William Headley is a support technician from HBS as well. And Frank Vio is a support technician from HBS. So our mission is to, purpose of the technology program is to provide the technology and related services necessary to ensure students develop 21st century skills for college and career readiness. So our customers are all staff and students, which is approximately 4,000 people. And we provide technical support, planning, upgrades, and maintenance to those customers as needed based on needs assessments, technology refresh cycles, and trends in K-12 technology. Since COVID-19, we've been one-to-one with iPads in K-1 and Chromebooks in 2 through 12. And teachers are using technology to incorporate the four Cs, and those are critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. The long-term goals for the program are to keep technology up to date and innovative, improve service request completion times. And our short-term goals are to implement additional cybersecurity measures and to improve ticketing and inventory systems. Here's a list of our budgets for the past few years. Two years ago, our actual expenses were about 1.4 million and that encompasses supplies, salaries, services, everything. 2223 is about 1.68 million and the budget for 2324 is 1.797 million. So over the past year, some of our improvements that we've made, we've implemented new cybersecurity measures as required by our cybersecurity insurance through a cybersecurity grant. We've also implemented and integrated multiple new products from Frontline, which include absence management, time and attendance, recruiting and hiring, Frontline Central, as well as Raptor Alert, which is our new emergency notification system for our staff. And we've implemented a lot of automation in those systems to help keep them up to date. We've also replaced 11 traditional smartboards and projectors this year with new line interactive displays, and that's a pilot of a new brand, which gives us the same functionality but costs less. We've also upgraded our network management systems to the latest versions according to our internal update procedures. And we've also upgraded our network switches to replace aging equipment and improve network performance. We've also coordinated with Mr. Nolan and his safety team to implement new door access control locations through his safety grant, as well as door sensors and new cameras. Of course, we've replaced Chromebooks, teacher laptops, and desktops according to our rotation schedule. We finalized migrating some storage over to a new appliance. And we began the process of establishing data privacy agreements with software vendors who have our students' data. Some future improvement opportunities include continuing to upgrade our network backbone to prepare for the future, continue replacing traditional smartboards and projectors with those new line interactive displays, continue replacing computers and Chromebooks and iPads according to our replacement cycle, continue implementing more cybersecurity measures to achieve compliance with some critical controls and are changing cyber insurance requirements, continue upgrading our systems by replacing our core servers, and then also perform a full inventory of all software and sites that have our student data, both free and paid sites, so that we can establish those data privacy agreements or just continue using them. And then we're also going to work on centralizing and improving our documentation and standard operating procedures. So our goal for the past two years was to reduce the average ticket resolution time by 10% over those two years. And that aligns to our strategic plan goal of delivering high-quality educational experiences to support the diverse needs of our students because that helps our teachers and our students access the things that they need. So our measures of progress are ticket resolution time and average device age. So in the 2223 school year, our ticket resolution time was 5.4 days on average. We had 5,103 tickets that we resolved and the average device age of staff devices was 3.48 years. And for students, it was 2.5 years. For this current school year, as of just last week, our ticket resolution time is 4.7 days. And we've so far this year resolved 3,422 tickets. So we're well on our way to that 5,000 mark. Our average staff device age and student device age, if you round them, they're right at 3.0, which is where we want to be. So over those two years, or over the last year, we've reduced by 12%. And over the two years, we've reduced our ticket resolution time by 18.1%. Does anybody have any questions? That was a lot of information.
Is that all you do?
That's all I do.
That's exhausting. That's awesome, though. You guys do a great job. And how many devices do we have?
We have about 3,000 Chromebooks, about 600 iPads, about 750 various PCs throughout the district for staff use and student labs. And we have about 60 Macs, so.
So about one device per ticket if you get about 5,000 requests a year?
Close to it, yeah.
Wow, okay. Awesome.
Yeah, I can't thank Ryan enough for all the backend systems change work. It was hours and hours this past summer, you know, business services, HR. It's just cybersecurity, things that you don't readily see. He's constantly touching.
I'd like to thank my team as well because they were huge in those processes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, and we have a written program evaluation and at-risk. If you had a chance to review that. And then next, action items. Approved or the revised program of studies?
Moved to approve the revised program of studies for 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
Second. Do you have any questions? Questions? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Preliminary 2425 budget.
Moved to approve the 2024, 2025 preliminary budget as presented.
Second.
Annually, the district brings you the preliminary budget, which allows us to open up the next fiscal year to begin making purchases. At this point in the school year, the FY24 year-end fund balance, as Ginger mentioned just a few minutes ago, is looking at about 20.45%. So historically, we know that this number will continue to improve as we get closer to the end of the school year and close out our fiscal year in June. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the assumptions in FY25's fiscal budget. So really, one of the things we're going to do, we look at local revenue. And so looking at the past 10 years, we've experienced approximately 3% growth in assessed valuation in non-reassessment years. So that's something that we'll continue to factor in. Again, that won't get finalized until September, so keep in mind of that. We also have to be mindful of projections from the state. So we will decrease in our average daily attendance since the COVID hold harmless provisions no longer apply. We will also see an increase in our state adequacy target, the SAT, and that will go from 6375 to 6760, which is a dollar value the state has determined as the adequate level of per people funding. Prop C, we're continuing to watch. That's a state sales tax. And that's estimated to increase from 1360 to 1513 for FY25. And again, the state will finalize its budget in early May. So we'll continue to watch what these estimates are, and this is based on the governor's proposed budget. The projections also increase, include a decrease in federal revenue, which is due to the loss in funds associated with COVID. And again, this is just a preliminary operating budget. There are several variables that we take into consideration when developing the budget, which are subject to change. And we'll present a finalized budget to you in June.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hold on. So we all understand that this is an initial budget of a deficit spend of 500K. When we had our workshop, we talked about the possibility of a balanced budget.
Correct.
And are there, what are the factors that have led to the deficit spend?
Sure. So one of the things we know that historically, we start with a deficit at the beginning of the year and then we kind of work our way out of it. So we've tried to be more accurate with our estimates, but we know there's still estimates and there will still probably be that upswing. The other thing that we want to be mindful of is, and we'll get into this in our next presentation, is that we've gone through, when the August levy initiative didn't pass, that was pretty significant for our district. We've really taken a look at how we fill vacancies and we've really scaled back through attrition a number of positions, approximately 17 full and part-time positions. But in doing that, we had to be mindful of making sure that we were filling all critical positions. And that's something that we continue to evaluate. So at one point, we thought we were going to be at a balanced budget, but again, we released a couple of positions that added to some of that deficit.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the salary schedules for 2425.
Moved to approve the administrative professional certified and classified salary schedules for the 2024, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Well, thank you. Again, what you'll see before you tonight is three revised salary schedules. One that includes our classified, our certified. And we've also added a professional administrative salary schedule. Salary schedule revisions are costly. And I think it was important for us to really kind of dig deep and really make some systemic changes in what we can offer our staff. We felt really important, it was really important for us to look critically at how we can reward staff with longevity and tenure within the district. And again, in order to do that, we had to think differently about some of the problems that we're experiencing. And again, this comes out of sacrifice. Again, looking at positions through attrition, how we can be mindful, belt-tight, and be smart. And again, this will get us over the short term. I do believe in the very near future, we're going to see reductions in revenue through Senate Bill 190. And again, what happens in Jefferson City plays a direct impact on how we can compensate our staff. So again, while we've made some of these revisions and belt-tightening and reductions in staff only through attrition, I think it's really important for us to make a good faith effort in recognizing the hard work that our staff does. It was very important for us to work towards that strategic planning goal. So again, Zach's going to present to you some of the work that we've done over the past year.
Thank you, guys, for giving me a little time. Before we get into the salary schedule recommendations, I do want to just thank the board for supporting Puppy Pound and the EEC and that program there. I mean, you saw how those kids are blossoming in our district. And just as a staff member that uses that program, really appreciate the support there. And I appreciate Dr. Baugh and her staff for just the excellent care that our kids receive. And it's the program as a whole. It's just, it's wonderful. And it's something that not many districts have that we do. So just want to throw that out there. Okay, salary schedule recommendations for this year. This is the Salary and Benefits Committee, the members that worked on this diligently this year. But I'm going to come out and say, "This was a district effort." There wasn't a building that was touched by this. There wasn't an administrator. There wasn't a teacher that somehow weighed in on this whole process. It was, it started last spring. When we started the Salary and Benefits Committee last year, that was a goal that we looked at, looking at the strategic plan. That's Goal Four, exemplary and valued staff, employees wanting to offer those compensation. But Salary and Benefits Committee, I really got to pick out Becky Bernkiper. Dr. M- Dr. Miller and I have put her through the wringer this whole year, as far as, I don't know how many spreadsheets, she probably has nightmares about spreadsheets. I know I do this year, and she has done so much work for us. Leanne Bradbury, Ginger. I can't forget, My Right Arm, Don Kuhnrod, and then again, Dr. Miller. A lot of this has been her tireless effort in making this work, but really, the Salary and Benefits Committee has been instrumental in shaping this whole process, and I just, my hat's off to them, and they've been a great group to work with, very good group to work with. So just talk real quickly about the process. Again, Salary and Benefits Committee, we started in the spring, looking at our salary schedules, and we really, the first step was just looking at, we really didn't have much of an admin schedule, it was basically building principals. We have a teacher's schedule, we had a classified schedule. And looking at this, and we've talked about this before in work sessions, one of the main deficiencies that we identified, save not being competitive in our market and in the metro, was the structure of the schedules themselves. So we've talked about this, but maybe let's talk about Bachelor's column on our teacher's salary schedule, certified schedule. Going from step one to step 10, you could have 10 different percentages between steps. It could be 1%, it could be a half percent, it could have been 2%. So we wanted to standardize that. That was a goal. Also, looking at our market and metro areas, market meaning Smithville, Platte County, Liberty, Excelsior, the schools that we compete with for teachers, the geographical area, that was a recommendation from the Salary and Benefits Committee, that we really focus on those areas, but we also want to compare ourselves to the metro. We're still, we're still a metro district and we need to compete with the metro area. We also looked at individuals when we were looking at this. We looked at each individual staff member to make sure that when we initiated and implemented this schedule with approval, that no one's going to go backwards, that everyone's going to get some kind of raise. And then also, we looked at the market and metro, we really had to focus on some employee categories. We had some employee categories that were far below market that we had to adjust, that there were some focus areas. So some of the highlights, and I spoke about the inconsistencies in the steps. So with classified, on steps 1 through 10, there's a 2% increase per step from 1 through 10. So 1 to 2, you're going to get a 2% raise, just based on your step. And after step 10, it's 1.5. For certified and for the professional and administrative, all their steps are 1.5% in between each step. All right? So that's a flat increase. So each step now has value every single year. So teachers can predict, staff can predict, administrators can predict what they're going to make per step. We also index columns on the certified schedule. So there is actually a percentage between bachelors, masters, specialists. There's a specific percentage based on the base, that if we would increase the base, that percentage will trickle throughout the schedule. So there's no more guesswork. It'll be a consistent increase as we move. And really, when we looked at that indexed, those columns, we really, we did increase the base to 42.5, as you see up there, but really, as Dr. Miller talked about earlier, we really focused this year, because last year, we focused on recruitment on the front end. We did some work to the first four columns and changed those to two, and made those a little more competitive. But this year, we really focused on that bottom right of the salary schedule, or even the bottom part of the salary schedule, to reward longevity, to reward those who stay with Carney School District. And as the saying goes now, retention is the new recruitment. All right? We want to keep the great teachers, the great staff that we have here in KSD, and we have to reward them as they stay, the longer they stay here. So this is the Salary Schedule Staff Impact Summary. This was sent out to the staff this afternoon with approval. This is what they can expect in their new schedules. So classified, I'll go through each column, there's a range of increase. There was a 0.3% for some, but then some folks got a 20% raise, depending on what category they're in. Again, we did focus on certain employee categories more than others because of the market value that we saw, and they weren't competitive. The average percent increase for our classified was 7.68%. Overall impact to the budget estimated is $310,000. For certified, the range is 1.61 to 1116. The average is 6.19% for the impact to the budget estimated is $1 million. For the professional admin, the range was 0.98 to 1058 for an average increase per administrator or professional, 6.16. Impact to the budget was $215,000. The overall impact of these salary schedule proposals will be $1.5 million to the budget. So that's really it for what the changes are for the schedule. You guys have seen the schedules presented, they should be in your packets. One thing I want to forecast with you, along with salary schedules, benefits. We really wanted to talk benefits tonight, about some of the contracts that we wanted our attorneys to vet before approval, were a little late getting to us, so we'll just move those back later on. We're still good for open enrollment, so it's not going to be, we're not in a rush for that, and we want to make sure that we take, or do our due diligence, due diligence, and get those vetted to make sure that we're making the right change. But some of the things that we're looking at doing, moving from Blue Cross to Blue Shield to Aetna. Aetna was more willing to work with our new strategy of a partially self-funded model. The plan change also, really excited about this, that we'll offer three plans for our staff. Two will be board-paid, and one will be a buy-up option that has a lower deductible that's a little more rich. Two of those plans will have a broad network and one will have a narrow network. But met with, when was that, April 1st, we had our PD Day, and so USI, our broker, came down. We held a Q&amp;A session in the morning at 7:30, and then we had another one at 3:15. The morning one was very well attended. I bet we had, I don't know, over 100 people there, really good questions. We got a lot of the kinks worked out. From that session, we were able to develop an FAQ that we can move forward, but really, it's been a very good, I mean, there's been, you know, can I see my doctor? That's a big question. How much is this going to cost me? I think we were able to answer most of those questions. And to talk about disruption for employees, when USI did our disruption report, there's probably about a 99.8% disruption. There's a 0.2% of folks that might not have the same coverage that they did before. It's really, really good. Aetna actually has a little bit broader network than Blue Cross/Blue Shield does. So I really don't feel like that disruption for the end user, meaning those who take insurance, are going to see much change. In fact, it's going to be better coverage, it's a better plan, it's going to be better for everyone, and it's going to be better financially for the district. And then, something else that will be coming to you this next month is, we're going to talk career ladder. Next week, the Career Ladder Committee is going to meet and revise the career ladder plan. The reason being is that the district has capped career ladder expenditures to $500,000, and so there's going to need to be some changes to our plan to accommodate that cap. This year, we've kind of opened it up, and those who are available could apply. There's going to be some stipulations, but the Career Ladder Committee is going to be instrumental in developing those stipulations. And then also stipends. We will also talk stipends next month, so if you're curious about that. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yeah, sure.
So the change to the salary schedules to streamline, standardize, what is the overall benefit to the district? Like, I mean, are we just, is it time to bite the bullet to do this? Or like, why was it, like, now that we've decided to, like, hey, we're going to clean this whole thing up?
Well, I think when Dr. Miller and I, and I think the staff too, but when Dr. Miller and I walked in, we looked at our salary schedules and we saw some pain points there. But to be honest with you, it was the strategic plan that probably drove most of this work. You know, that full 4.1, we want to be in that top tier with our metro and peer districts. And, you know, I think the motivation really is that we feel obligated to provide competitive compensation for our staff. We have the best staff in the state, and we need to pay them like they're the best staff in the state. And we can't do everything we want to do, but that's really the motivation.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, John, getting up in front of staff last year, I mean, it became painfully apparent in visiting, I've got one staff meeting in mind in particular, where it was basically articulated to us, depending on where you are on the salary schedule, steps have no value, right? And that's what we wanted to change, so that each step has a consistent value. And so I think that really resonated with us on why it was important. Did we accomplish everything that we wanted to do? No, we didn't. But I think, again, we made a good step forward, and again, a good faith effort for improvement.
And I think, too, to piggyback on what Dr. Miller said from that staff meeting, is we've often heard, you know, when you get to year 15, year 20, and that's where we've lost some of our teachers, some of our best veteran teachers in this district, the comment is, I can go next door and make 10 grand more on the salary schedule. That's not the case anymore. So.
So the other question is, is that in the past years, we've always seen how everyone gave a large increase, and we were giving a more standard 3%, 2%, 1%. Where does this rival as far as, like, with our peer group? Are we giving a larger increase than our peer group, or is it about the same or on average?
Not everybody has released their information correct on the 92 corridor.
That's correct. I'm still waiting to see Smithville and Platte County, but I'd say we're probably about average. I've seen close to eight for certified staff in one district that's close to us, but I've seen as low as four. But I'd say between four and eight is pretty much, I think we're pretty much in the middle there.
Okay. Because that is a talking point that you will get with teachers as well, which I'm sure you know.
Yeah.
That, you know, oh, well, so-and-so went up.
Well, we had a 92 corridor district that just passed a measure, too. So again, you know, we will have to be mindful about going back to the public at some point. I do think this is a step in the right direction, but I feel like we had to go back and do our due diligence, and I think that's what we've done.
Fair enough.
Not a question, but sitting on the committee, this was one of the largest, larger committees involving teachers that we've had on the salary and benefit for a while, isn't it?
There's 22 staff members, but I would say a majority of those are teachers. And then we have an ad hoc, which is a lot of central office administrators and other folks that need to weigh in at certain times to provide, you know, clarifying information to teachers so they understand, the experts in our district.
So I just, looking, sitting there at the meetings and now looking from here, the work that went into this with administrators, but then with those teachers to go back and forth to their buildings, to their peers, you guys, like you said, I mean, this started last spring, you guys have put hours and hours into this. So as a board member, I really appreciate that. I appreciate those teachers getting the feedback, and you guys just listening to where things need to change and knowing that. So thank you for your hard work.
Don't you think, we talk collaborative, you know, learning all the time, why can't we also be collaborative learners?
Oh, I think this was a hundred.
Right. So I think that plays to that, Bree, which I appreciate.
The teachers that brought the ideas, and they did, they sat in those meetings and they told us what they thought, and it was, we heard it and we're trying and...
Sometimes it's better to hear what you don't want to hear.
Absolutely. It was. And you ran those meetings great. I mean, I think that that's a big point. You guys did a lot of work on this, so thank you.
It's a nice compliment, thank you. Any other questions or anything I can clarify for you all? Great, thank you.
I think it's an important point, and we've said it, but just important for us all to remember that this was done certainly with some reductions, but no layoffs. It was all through attrition of all the positions and a careful look at making sure that every position that we did decide to go ahead and fill was a critical position and keeping our students in mind to give them the best that we can give. But still, some tough decisions at times.
Thank you.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor? Abstained? Thank you. Next, we have approval of payment to cold printing.
Move to approve payment to cold printing as presented.
Second. All in favor? Abstained? Abstained? Thank you. Board member comments?
So Dr. Baugh, that was probably the most fun I've ever had.
That was fun.
It was great.
I still have my bell, just so you know.
I kept the bell. You never played in the right spot, though.
And I may have played it in the wrong spot a couple of times. The little guy helped me. So that was really cool. You can tell the love that your staff has for that, and that's very appreciative, and I just want you to know that I noticed it, and it was amazing. So thank you for doing that tonight. That was really cool.
Thank you.
I want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Miller. She is one not to put much attention on herself, but we want to take this opportunity to recognize her. Her peer organization, the Missouri Association of Superintendents, has recognized her this year as the emerging superintendent for the regional Kansas City area, which, that's a pretty big deal. And so we're very proud of her and the work that she's done, and certainly, she's exhibiting great leadership both within the district and without. And Meredith, were you going to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, yesterday, I was able to attend Advocacy Day in Jefferson City with Dr. Miller and Dr. Bailey, and I had the privilege of meeting with a couple of our state representatives. And I'd like to encourage everyone to support or to, if you're interested in supporting our district, to read up on what's happening with Senate Bill 727 and all the upcoming votes that may affect our district. It was amazing to see Dr. Miller at work. I felt like at some point, she knew more than our representatives on some of the subjects, so that was interesting, and I'd like to thank her for that. I also want to extend a personal wish of gratitude to Susan Orman tonight. Long before she was on the school board, she was in the trenches of our schools volunteering any way she could, and a practice that she continued to do on the school board to the benefit of multitudes of students and teachers. Susan, I want to thank you for your many, many years of service to the Carney School District. You are valued.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Just me?
We're going to celebrate you in a little bit, but yes, formally, Susan, and I think we've got something for you, a little receptional bit, but we do want to thank you for your service on behalf of the board. It's been six-plus years.
I say seven.
You finished the term for...
But it's really 14 because of COVID years. Dog years.
But on behalf of the board as a whole, thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't usually speak a lot during board meetings, so everybody who decided to come, this is your lucky day. I want to talk a little about some of the things that I am passionate about and that I will always and will continue to do, but I had to write it down. How often do we hear the phrase, once a bulldog, always a bulldog? We hear it a lot, and yet I think it means different things to different people. I think the word "always" is very significant in this phrase. As I was nearing my school board retirement, I wondered what "always a bulldog" really means to me. Always. I have been and will always be a teacher advocate. I will continue to fight vigorously for an increase in pay for teachers and staff of the Carney School District, regardless of the personal cost to me and my family. I recognize the value that the KSD staff brings to this community, and I know that attracting and retaining teachers is key. Increases in taxes is a big issue of great concern for everyone, but if we don't continue to keep our teachers and staff here in Carney, we will feel the pain. Our students will feel the pain. We will feel the pain in our personal property, our property values. We need to support our staff in their effort to always be a bulldog. Always. I will always believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion, regardless of the semantics used by some to diminish what this means. Everyone here is a diverse individual and deserves to be treated equally and with respect. I have confidence in this board to continue to treat all students and staff the same, regardless of their sexual orientation, their race, their religion, their economic status, et cetera. Always a bulldog means always be inclusive. Always. I will always look for ways that we can keep a safe environment in our schools. It's scientifically proven that the human brain is incapable of learning or accepting new information unless there is an absence of threat. Threats have increased in recent years, whether that be external threats, which I pray we never have to experience, or internal threats such as bullying or marginalizing people. Removing threats from our environment is not just the role of this incredibly capable board, but it's also responsibility of staff, parents, and our entire community. I encourage everyone to fully support efforts to remove threats to our children, to allow them to learn. It truly has been an honor to serve this community and the Carney School District for the past seven years. You are in great hands with this board. You will continue to have my support, even though I no longer sit in the seat. Supporting this district, not just with words, but with actions, is what it means to always be a bulldog, and I will always, always be here to support KSD. Thank you.
Susan? Susan.
Alumni board members back here tonight who came to support Susan and your time here, and also Don. I see you, I can't see you, but I know you're back there, so.
He's back there. A little gimpy, but he's back there.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have some housekeeping here. Certification of the election.
Move to certify the election results, naming Darlene Bailey and Matthew Baker as the incoming board members.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Disillusion of the board?
Move to dissolve the 2023-2024 Board of Education.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Meredith Cole. Yes. John Kern.
Yes.
Reese Weiser. Yes. Nick Vaskus.
Yes.
Darlene Bailey.
Yes. Now we have the oath of office, so. For agenda item 10, we'll administer the, administer the oath of office to newly elected board members. Board policy G255A requires that successful board candidates shall take an oath of office to faithfully perform the duties of the office as required by law to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Missouri, and the laws made pursuant thereto. Becky will administer the oath. Please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after Becky. Now that the board members are sworn in, it's the election of the president of the Board of Education. The floor is open for nominations.
Move to elect Dr. Darlene Bailey to serve as president of the Carney School Board during the 2024-2025 school year.
My second.
Dr. Darlene Bailey has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the board will now vote via roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Matt Baker. Darlene Bailey.
Yes. At this point, the board president is a presiding officer and can handle the agenda going forward.
Emily, you want to do that some more?
Okay, now we will take nominations for vice president.
I move to elect Bree Weiser to serve as vice president of the Carney School Board during the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
Any other nominations? Roll call, please.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Meredith Cole. Yes. John Kern.
Yes.
Reese Weiser. Yes. Nick Vaskus.
Yes.
Matt Baker.
Yes.
Darlene Bailey.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Approval of district designations.
Move to approve Ginger.
Elsie.
Sorry, I knew it. As treasurer and Leanne Bradbury as alternate, alternate treasurer to, and approve Becky Burkhepper as secretary and Don Kuhnrod as alternate secretary for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
Do we have to roll call for this one? All in favor? Post, thank you. Board comments?
Congratulations, new board member and, and incumbent.
Thank you very much.
And Bree for getting to keep the VP, everybody, yay.
All right, very good. I think we like it at the end of the board meeting too, so we like this format.
Yep.
Okay, important dates, April 15th is the District Awards and Retiree Open House at the Tobacco Barn Farm. It's coming up. April 19th is the Rise and Shine Breakfast. On the 23rd, we will have our next quarterly board work session. 15th is our next board meeting, and the 19th is graduation.
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in May, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610-021 of the Missouri sunshine law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Meredith Cole. Yes. John Kern.
Yes.
Reese Weiser. Yes. Nick Vaskus.
Yes.
Matt Baker.
Yes.
Darlene Bailey.
Yes. We are adjourned, but we will have a reception here for everybody to celebrate Susan and celebrate Matt, so I encourage you all to stay around for a little while. Thank you.